I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council held on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, commencing at 7 o'clock PM. I will call roll, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Here.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Here.
Councilmember Salahu Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have a sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 4217A555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the city of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet. There are seven people signed up to speak tonight in person, and no one has signed up to speak remotely. So I will start with the first names and just give you an idea who's coming next. We'll start with Max Rollman, then Wolf Adriatico, then Chester Anderson, then Aaron Hamilton.
Hello, welcome back. I'm a member of staff. All views expressed are my own. I received an email from Parks Director Lorraine Hamilton, letting me know that the city lacks the capacity to include me on their stakeholder group. This is a total cop-out of a reason, because the capacity is an artificial constraint. The loudest, most-involved voices are being kept out of this group so that the mayor and Parks Director don't have to answer for their poor decision-making, lack of transparency, and all of this is being done without a drop of care or empathy. Lorraine, what's your real reason for keeping us out of the stakeholder group? What are you covering up? It feels like everywhere I go, I'm reminded of the OFH. At the Museum of Pop Culture in Seattle, there's a plaque dedicated to the Old Firehouse. It mentions how the space has empowered teens. It mentions its location in the heart of downtown Redmond, and the fact that it is a uniquely teen-centered space. I'm gonna remember this. I'm gonna remember all of this. I will remember how my life was saved by the firehouse. I will remember how my safe space was discarded and my community shattered. I will remember the barely-human expressions out of the mayor as she tries hard to disregard us. I will remember the mistakes I made. I remember what worked. I remember the concerts, and the signs, and the love that we share for each other.
Next is Wolf Adriatico, then Chester Anderson, then Aaron Hamilton, then Faith Onor.
Hello. No script today. I'd like to start by thanking, I guess, the city in general, because no one likes to take responsibility. I'd like to thank the city in general for allowing me to be on the stakeholder group, for making decisions, or contributing to, by being a sounding board for decisions regarding OFH and teen services. Off with positivity. The stakeholder group timeline has been a wild ride. After around five months since the closure of OFH, of the city doing nothing, less than nothing, making the situation worse the only times it did anything, suddenly, we have the subcommittee formed, which is a good thing. I was under the impression that the council subcommittee was to be separate from the mayor's stakeholder group, but it seems that this has been changed. Shortly after the formation of the subcommittee, we were given a very short timeline, I believe, three days after being notified, to get a list of all the people we would like on the subcommittee. So, a list of teens that are interested in being on the subcommittee, or being on the stakeholder group, sounding board, don't want to get terms mixed up. And we sent in that list, and it seems it went into the void for a little bit, came back after Steve Field sent it in to the subcommittee, and it was seen by Lorraine Hamilton, who no idea if she is setting the deadlines. Not sure who is making any of the decisions, really, but I know that she proposed the initial list of members for the stakeholder group, which was comprised of city employees, which brings up a significant conflict of interest in that it is widely suspected, if not outright known, that Lorraine Hamilton has a tendency to pressure the employees of the city. And that the fact that the stakeholder group is to be comprised of city employees, and that Lorraine Hamilton is also vetting who is allowed in the stakeholder group, I don't think that's a good thing. I think that the council should have full say in who is there. In conclusion, this sucks. See ya.
Next is Chester Anderson, then Aaron Hamilton, and then Faith, and I'm sorry, I can't read your last name, so when you come up, let me know what it is, and then David Morton.
Right. So first, I would like to call attention, the White Board of People of Redmond, expressing their views at Pride about the firehouse and the city's decision-making. I want to talk about how we see ourselves, because when you grow up, at least from my experience, growing up in Redmond, being very privileged, liberal, and white, you kind of come to learn these social scripts of, you come to want to see yourself as a good person, no matter what. And when you hurt someone, it means that you end up ignoring that you hurt them, or that you feel the need to convince yourself that you didn't hurt them, not for the sake of being a good person, but for the sake of seeing yourself as a good person. And I'm saying this because I see a lot of my own mistakes in the city. You know, like, the city, its whole, what is its slogan? Is that we value equity, and inclusivity, everything, but you look at things like this, and it really makes you question it. But the worst part is that the city isn't doing it with its chest. It's doing it under the guise of flowery language, and your words are being heard, and we value your input while we are completely swept under the rug. And at a certain point, it becomes not about your image, but about accountability, as an entity, as a person. You know, it's about honesty, and willing to admit when you messed up, you know? And I think, I understand that me talking about privilege and whiteness may make the council uncomfortable. I think it's important that we have these uncomfortable conversations, especially, another, especially, we need to get uncomfortable, talking about the current state of the federal government. We see the strip back of DI. We see the destruction of third spaces of the mental, we see the mental health crisis, especially among youth. We see substance abuse. We see all these things that are related to the destruction of culture, the destruction of community. And I really think, this is all really scary in the context of what the federal government is doing. You know, you look at, you look at the issue, like, as objectively as possible, you see a bunch of, you see the city with all of its privilege and power against a bunch of mentally ill, neurodivergent gay kids, and you have to wonder, what is this really about? It's not about the building. It's not about safety. It's like, it's about protecting your community, and it's about taking accountability and being honest. That's all we've ever wanted, is honesty. We don't want to fight the city. We don't want to have to come here every two weeks and cuddle people three times our age. Like, I'm sorry, I know that is rude, but that is the most objective way I can put it. Like, this is so exhausting for all of us. We should be worrying about our careers, not, oh, now I have to go yell at people who aren't even gonna listen, again. I just, we don't want to be mad at you. We want to work with you. In conclusion, we hope that you can face the truth, take accountability, and start doing what is right, instead of focusing on an image. Thank you.
Next is Aaron Hamilton, then Faith, and then David Morton.
I hope that you'll give me a little bit of flexibility on this time. This is a very serious matter that I'm about to discuss, that you guys keep not acknowledging in the email. And I'm disappointed that Chief Lowe is not in attendance today. Pride Across the Bridge always has one simple ask for the Redmond Police Department. They understand the need for you to be there, but always ask that the officers park nearby but out of sight. That is a very reasonable ask. Pride Across the Bridge always gets the proper permits to run the event and use trained third-party security. They also try to provide Chief Lowe with all the necessary permits, documentation, emergency event protocols, and procedures. Each time Pride Across the Bridge tried to do the right thing, Chief Lowe has always been argumentative, dismissive, and unprofessional, giving responses, and I quote, "I don't care. My officers will do whatever they want." This year, the level of retaliation and intimidation escalated to a new high. Chief Lowe, or Deputy Chief, if you can pay attention, is your department's ego so fragile that you feel necessary to have your officers circle the downtown park in their patrol cars, treating us like criminals the entire Pride event. All because we simply asked your officers to park out of sight? Do we deserve that? You definitely don't pull this shit with any other community organizers that are throwing events in this park downtown. And I'm pissed. I'm actually livid, because you people are not listening to any of the emails I say, bringing this up. And I hope the email you got, Mayor, for requests of, for requests of a meeting, to talk about his behavior towards our community. The method of intimidation will not be tolerated by us anymore. Your department's actions created unnecessary unrest among the attendees who simply just wanted to celebrate the community they are a part of and love. It also distracted the security hired to keep the event safe. People were legitimately worried that your officers were going to do something to them. There were even reports of a plainclothed officer making rounds at the park. Granted, it is unclear if it was city, state, or federal, but it happened regardless. This isn't the first time his department has retaliated with intimidation. The first two years, officers were constantly harassing the organizers, saying that they did not have the necessary permits to operate the event, even though they had submitted them before and provided them in person. The relationship between the two parties has deteriorated enough that Pride Across the Bridge wants absolutely nothing to do with the Redmond Police Department. This has become a very serious issue that also reflects on the relationship with the city.
And in conclusion...
Every other East Side Police Department has been welcoming and shown willingness to cooperate with the...
And Faith, you're up next.
And you, Mayor.
Your time is up. You need to leave the microphone. Thank you.
This is a pattern. Please continue to behave your character.
Ms. Hamilton, your time is up. You need to leave the microphone.
...has labeled him transphobic. I am quite clear...
We're gonna take a recess. Thank you. And we are back. Faith, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. What is it?
My last name is Otter.
Otter, thank you. You have three minutes.
Forgive me if this is a little bit short. Public speaking kind of scares me a little bit. The firehouse was a fantastic space for, I've been there a couple of times to see shows there, and it was, from the stories that I've heard from some very, very good friends of mine, it was an absolutely vital space for their, to help in their upbringing as teens, and also just as a space for them to go when everything else didn't feel safe. When it was closed, a lot of the, I saw how a lot of my friends became, had, excuse me. Its closure came as a massive blow to the hearts of the teens for whom it had become home. I have little faith left that culture is a goal that this council truly cares for, but I find it baffling that the situation has been handled in this way. Even taking the most selfish framework possible, Redmond had what amounted to a monopoly on creative spaces for teens on the East Side, gaining the trust of amazing, talented people in Redmond. Thirty years of goodwill flipped on its head in less than a month. I don't know if Redmond truly just doesn't want these people coming to Redmond and would rather have the real estate value, but it's beginning to seem like that way to me, and I can't see any other way, given how this has been handled. Thank you.
And next is David Morton.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm David Morton. I'd like to address some significant development considerations in southeast Redmond. Cadman's former gravel mining operations lie within Redmond's Critical Aquifer Recharge Area, or CARA. Lake Washington School District recently acquired a substantial parcel within the gravel pit area for future school development. A proposal for an adjacent parcel, also in the CARA, seeks a zoning change to allow for a large mixed-use development, including unspecified manufacturing and wholesale trade, commercial space, and residential dwelling units. This parcel also directly borders existing residential homes. While this may create new jobs and a live-work environment, this proposal presents a fundamental conflict with the city's own strategic goals. Redmond's comprehensive plan aims to establish a countywide industrial growth center in this area to protect and expand manufacturing uses, and to prevent encroachment from incompatible uses, specifically housing. This proposal does the opposite. It introduces a housing component and unspecified industrial activities adjacent to a future school and an existing residential neighborhood. This poses serious long-term land-use conflicts and compatibility issues, placing students and families in a residential environment next to unknown industrial operations. The lack of specificity regarding the manufacturing activities raises environmental concerns, particularly the risk of groundwater contamination in a CARA. This conflict has consequences for the health and safety of the community. The city's own strategic vision recognizes that industrial and residential uses are often incompatible. Introducing unknown manufacturing processes so close to where children will learn and play, and where families already live, creates a recipe for future problems. Possible noise, vibration, and air emissions from industrial activities could impact the learning environment of students and the quality of life for nearby residents. Redmond has a responsibility to prevent such conflicts before they arise. It's far easier to make the right decision now than to manage the long-term repercussions of an ill-fitting land-use strategy. The health of Redmond's aquifer and the community's well-being are too important to be compromised by a proposal that lacks clarity and foresight. Development proposals should be consistent with Redmond's strategic vision, safeguard the environment, and protect the health and safety of Redmond's residents and their children. Thank you.
Items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's all moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be polled? Seeing none, I will read item number seven, ordinance into the record. Ordinance number 3226, an ordinance of the city of Redmond, Washington, amending Title 21 of the Redmond Municipal Code, known as the Redmond Zoning Code, to complete the 2025 annual code cleanup, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. We're gonna do a roll call, because we do have someone online. I will start with Council President Kritzer.
Aye.
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 And that passes seven to zero. Thank you. The next item of business is the Ombuds Report. For August, we have Councilmember Salahu Dean, and then for September, we have Anderson. Councilmember Salahu Dean, would you like to talk about August?
Yeah, thank you. And there's some toward the end that, because of August recess, I have not gotten back to yet, but I'll just go through the month. So, what we heard in public comment today, Old Firehouse engagement process suggestions, along with some questions and comments on the subcommittee. So, I know that folks on the subcommittee have been following up as they've been organizing that. Potential noise code violations at downtown Park, and our city's response from the police department, but also balancing the vibrant community events that we have with making sure that we're not overburdening our community around the park with noise. Concerns with the parking policy in Redmond, heard about that, as well as the Idlewood Beach water conditions leading to the closure of the beach in the park, along with the reopening as of last week. We heard a comment from, regarding pickleball at the Old Redmond Schoolhouse. Many emails around the closure of the Fred Meyer store in Redmond, and some emails about potential work to oppose that in conjunction with labor partners, and then many emails regarding, many of which went to the Mayor Council email, but the ISA gun range and the business license renewal. Some new emails that I have not gotten back to yet, but will be, is a email regarding the East Side Little Learners, and a potential path to compliance for long-term operations for that childcare space. The Washington Talangana Association invitation, so I'll be responding to that, and councilmembers can attend accordingly. A letter of support request for Crisis Care Center in Redmond in the eastern region of King County, and then a concern regarding Plymouth Housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
No emails for September to the council mailbox.
Great, thank you. Any other ombuds items to report on? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I'll just remind the public that our next gun violence prevention program is happening on Saturday, September 20th, right here on the municipal campus. So, more information to be coming, but do mark your calendar for Saturday, September 20th, for the gun buyback event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items? Council President?
Yeah, I think, good summary from my colleague of quite a few emails that I also responded to individually, specifically also following up with concerns around the Fred Meyer closure, and then also got a request to be able to support efforts to establish federal legislation to protect our forests via a roadless rule, and followed up with that request as well. And then also did quite a bit of follow-up as part of the subcommittee, and just wanted to recognize, you know, have been in conversation both with our staff, as well as hearing requests from those who are interested in engaging in both the stakeholder group, as well as the focus groups, and have been sharing out in particular that there's kind of, I think, the goal is that there's an opportunity for everyone to be able to give input, that the council will be able to take as the feedback through the process. And so, and I think there have been, as the different invitations to the different forums have been rolling out, there's been some confusion. I've been doing my best to try to address that from my perspective. I know our staff has also been doing that outreach. I would like to note, I think, one of the things that the subcommittee has done thus far was to look at the initial list, and then give feedback on who else needed to kind of be in the room for both the sounding board, as well as for the focus groups. And the first meeting, just so that the council knows, is gonna be September 10th. I think there wasn't some initial communications. It would be earlier for the sounding board, and then the focus groups will also be followed up from there. And my understanding from looking at the list was that it was basically all community members. I think there was maybe one, one or two staff on there, but other than that, I think it was just one staff. But other than that, it was just commissioners. So, just to be clear, commissioners are residents that are staff, that are not staff. They're residents that serve on our commissions to give input from residents to our council. So, but I know that we're continuing, as the subcommittee, to be able to monitor and make sure that everybody has the opportunity to give input to the council on this really important decision, and look forward to reporting back some more on that.
Great, thank you. Yes, there are, if I recall correctly, we have two staff members that are on it, who are part of, when we did, for example, the Redmond Senior Community Center Stakeholder Group, we did the same thing, where we had either the director or the deputy director, and then another staff member. We have our, our super planner, Parks Planner, I can't even recall your title, I'm sorry, also part of the conversation, so that they're here firsthand, what the community is talking about. Any other ombuds items? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you, Mayor. Going way back to the beginning of August, we did have our National Night Out, where myself, Council President Kritzer, and Councilmember Stewart, the three of us attended various national nights out to connect with community members, which was wonderful. It was everything from homemade ice cream, to one of the events that I attended, and lots of conversations about a multitude of topics throughout the city, as well as attending another where the focus was on emergency preparedness. And one neighbor was going over how to put together a go-bag, in case that there is an emergency they need to go. So, that was wonderful. I also attended the Budgeting and Fiscal Management Workshop with Association of Washington Cities, deepening my education around that. Council Vice President Forsyth and I attended Ananda Mela, where on behalf of the city, we read the proclamation there. We also attended, both myself and Council Vice President, excuse me, Forsyth, attended a mission update for Artemis II with Rockadine, going over what, just getting an update of where things are, and also acknowledging our workforce that is working hard on that. Artemis II, of course, it's a unique opportunity, where we got to hear from key leaders and experts involving the mission for deep-space exploration, but how the project involves every single state of our country, which was wonderful, because then Redmond gets to represent the state of Washington. I also attended Rocking on the River, one of the three that we had here on municipal grounds, which was wonderful. Again, another opportunity to connect with neighbors and have conversations about what they're thinking and feeling. I got to see my colleague, Councilmember Stewart, at one of them as well, which was wonderful. And also, more conversations by attending Hard Happy Hour with the opening of Nelson Legacy Group's first large housing development, with the opening of the Charles. Most recently, I attended Redmond Pride this past Saturday. Again, lots of conversations, and folks wanting to talk about, again, just a multitude of topics from around the city. It was a busy, a busy recess for sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, so, in the interest of being, of residents being heard, I want to expand on Councilmember Salahu Dean's reference to the ISA emails that we received. We actually received something like, at least 50 at last count, and I think it's of note that even though they all came with the same topic, each one of those emails was individually written. They weren't one of, what we've got in the past, a cut and paste. So, I think it's important that those people know that we did receive their emails, and they are being heard. I still hear from our community, both employees and residents, on the concern of civil rights, and, and, you know, it's a national news, and as Chester mentioned it earlier, this is not business as usual. I think the city still, even though we're doing that soul-searching on what we can do to make sure that our residents are protected from our own federal government, I think that that's a topic that we can't drop. And with respect to the teens... And with respect to the Teen Center Stakeholder Group, I appreciate Council President's words. I do want to point out that during that meeting, I did try to clarify who has the final say on who's on that committee. It was never clear to me. It was described as a collaborative process, and the reason I bring that up is because there was a few people who testified that it is not clear whether this is a council decision, a mayor's decision, or a staff decision. So I do think we owe that, and hopefully, when we have our first stakeholder meeting, we can clarify that.
Any other ombuds items? Council President Kritzer?
I just lost my train of thought. I had an idea...oh, I remember now. Apologies. I did want to follow up with the council, let you know that just before we went on recess, or right after we went on recess, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Salahudin, and I were able to have a meeting with many of our nonprofits that serve our immigrant communities. And then also, I know several councilmembers have also been gathering some input through one-on-one conversations with many of our community-based organizations. The three of us do have a follow-up conversation with the mayor and Director Helen, just to be able to brainstorm on some of the things that we've heard from community, and we'll be coming back at Council Talk Time next week to share some additional ideas with the council based on that. So just to...Councilmember Fields' comment reminded me, you know, in terms of some things that we can do to support our community at this moment, based on what we've heard from them.
Thank you. Any other items? Next, our committee reports. I know it was August, and we're off most of the month, but I know there are a couple of things to report on. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I'll just keep it to the one, because it's pretty important. I want to let the council know that Thursday of this week will be the final committee meeting for the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priorities Committee. So I have reviewed the staff recommendations, our process. As always, this year was a large survey that was collected, a survey was offered to cities and towns across Washington State. That data was collected, as well as a large study across multiple days of the committee members, as we began to narrow, and over this past summer, we've begun to narrow down and prioritize. And so what I'm about to share with you is the staff's synthesis of all of that, their recommendations for the top three priorities. And if you remember, for the Association of Washington Cities, these are the ones that our lobbyists in the organization really spend the most time on. Again, as I've shared before, I think a theme of the year and the year ahead in Olympia will be about providing cities the funding tools and flexibility and progressive avenues that we quite frankly need most. So here are the staff recommendations. I'm just going to read these aloud so that the council has a chance to hear them. And please be in touch with me in the next couple of days. I believe our meeting is like 8:00 AM Thursday morning, or something like that. So the top three are going to be around, the first is around public defense, both increasing state support and funding for those public defenders, given the new standards, and in particular, enhancing support for increasing the workforce and the number of people who want to become public defenders. The second is around improving housing construction. This is how we're characterizing at the moment a bucket of funding tools that we're interested in, to see more housing and especially more deeply affordable housing produced in the state of Washington. And the third is sustainable local transportation, preservation, maintenance, and operations. This includes support for tools like road uses charges, highway usage fees, continued curiosity about the retail delivery fee, and expanded transportation benefit district authority, and some fun stuff like the exploration of a sidewalk utility that I would love to geek out with you all about. But those are the top three. Public defense, building more homes more quickly, and sustainable transportation solutions, mostly in those last two we're talking about funding as well. Be in touch with me over the next couple of days if you have questions. Otherwise, I look forward to sharing the results with everyone in the near future. Thanks.
Thank you. Other committee reports. Council President?
Well, following up on the legislative theme, I'll note that the East Side Transportation Partnership has started to convene a legislative Subcommittee to be able to work on our upcoming state legislative agenda, and the body has also asked that that Subcommittee work on looking at whether we want to create a federal agenda. We haven't done that before, but some other types of regional bodies do that, so looking to be able to bring in maybe some expertise from Redmond as well, and what we would want to see if we wanted to create something that just had some kind of top transportation priorities that we want to share out with our federal representation. And then I also attended the RIAA8 Management Committee Meeting, which is a group that makes recommendations to the full RIAA8 Salmon Recovery Council, which is the body of 28 jurisdictions that work together on salmon recovery across the Lakes Amish, Lake Washington, and Cedar River watersheds. And so we convened to be able to look at the budgets and work plans for the upcoming year. And actually, I'll note, one exciting thing of something we budgeted for this year that also has, was just released, we, one of the things that we've done in recent years, in addition to our normal, some of the kind of usual grant rounds, is we created a new grant fund that's to spur innovation, and really to help project sponsors that might want to do different salmon recovery projects, but not be ready for primetime on some of the more advanced grant programs, be able to apply and do kind of the first formative stages, or do just smaller things that would be more pilots, that might scale to something bigger. We've seen a lot of really cool projects come out of that. So we just actually, they just released today notice of another round of that, and we are recommending that next budget that we also include some additional funds to keep this innovation program going, because it's been really successful. So I'd say those are some top lines that we're looking at, and also ways to just continue to engage all the different partners that are a part of that. I also attended the Kokoni Work Group, along with some of our city staff, looking at some of the work around specifically recovering Kokoni in Lakes Amish. And got some good news there, also some not-so-good news about some bacteria that got infected in some of the salmon fry, so it seems like we may not be able to do our usual release into the lake, because in order to make them be healthy, they had to release them a little bit sooner. So, but hopefully, they are going to make it, that batch, and we're also, but we are seeing a lot of the tactics that we're using being really effective, and just continuing to invest in a lot of science-based strategies to be able to bring back our little red fish. So it was very, very cool to be able to hear some of the updates and have some discussions about how we can do more, as well as, you know, one of the big things that was of discussion is doing a new communications strategy and plan to engage lakeside owners further in the work around that. So that's all. Thanks.
Thanks. Other committee reports. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, the LTAC Committee met last week. We did our annual recommendation for grant funding, for LTAC funding. Staff will be bringing that forward. I won't provide the details of it, because I think we'll hear fully from staff, but I will say this, it was a well-attended meeting. It lasted the entire two hours that was scheduled, and there was a lot of very passionate discussion about the work. So you are getting the best recommendation from that committee.
Thank you. Other committee reports. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth and I attended the Disability Board. In addition to regular business, that's typical of every month, we reviewed and approved proposed policy language for uncovered services and supplies. For Cascade Water Alliance, Representative Redmond and headed down to Tacoma Headworks, where we celebrated the historic water supply agreement site earlier this year between Cascade Water Alliance and Tacoma Public Utilities, in addition to taking some extra time while there to tour and do a deeper dive on the Green River filtration facility.
Great, thank you. Other committee reports. I will share that I missed the last meeting of, or the only meeting in August, because I happened to be in Washington, DC for the second part of Housing Group that I'm working with in National League of Cities called The Great American Housing Comeback. I didn't pick the title, but it was a wonderful meeting. We met with not only elected officials from around the country, but also builders. Banks were represented, labor was represented. The American Planning Association is a partner in that, and many other organizations were also part of the conversation, and it's great that this is, work is continuing. We have, National League of Cities has put out a Housing Accelerator Playbook that we've been able to share far and wide around the country, and it's wonderful to hear that many jurisdictions are using that information to help them in their opportunities to build more housing. To Councilmember Stewart's note about the state legislative agendas as well, it's a national crisis, and I'm grateful that I've gotten to be a part of that. So more to come in the future, but it was a really great meeting, and I appreciate that. National League of Cities is supportive of that work that we're doing here. So just want to share that with everybody else. Any other committee reports for this evening? That is the end of committee reports. There is no unfinished business. There's no new business. There's no executive session, and that concludes our business items for this meeting. If there is no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great night.